This is December 10. And this is our reorganization meeting. We appreciate you all coming. Welcome. And we will begin our, uh, our meeting tonight with a presentation of the Pledge of Allegiance by the San Carlos Police Honor Guard. Gentlemen.
Oh, God. Okay. Hoo. Hoo. Heligard, right, face. Order, up. Present, come. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heligard, hoo. Heligard, right shoulder, up. Right, face. Hoo.
Thank you very much. That's a special treat. I think that's the first time I've seen them in our council meetings. They do a wonderful job and it's great to have them part of our program tonight. Item two on the agenda is changes to the order of agenda. I presume no one wants to make any changes. Would that be correct? I think we're all ready to go. All right? Number three, public comment. I do have one speaker card from Laura Finuki who would like to speak to us about HIP. Good evening, Laura.
Good evening, Mayor Davids and members of the council. My name's Laura Finuki. I'm the Director of Programs at HIP Housing. And I'm here tonight bearing gifts for you. I have the 2008 HIP Housing Calendar. This is a contest we have every year for students kindergarten through fifth grade in four school districts for them to draw a picture of their home and then to write a statement about what their home means to them. And we picked 12 winners from the 400 contest entrants. And this is our cover winner. He drew a beautiful picture of a fruit house. And I'd like to read you the statement of one of the contestant winners. It's for the month of November. And she says, "Home is where the tire swings, the icing on the cake. Nowhere can replace home and the magic it contains. Whether big or small, a home is a home to all." So we hope you enjoy these calendars throughout the year. We thank you very much for the support that you provide to HIP Housing so that we can continue to help our community find a place to call home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. And HIP does a wonderful job and we appreciate the calendars. And it's a great verse. We keep that one in mind. Would anyone else like to, uh, address the council in public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. We'd have a couple of items of business to take care of. One is 4A. The city clerk will announce results of the municipal election held November 6. Christine?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff and public. My name is Christine D. Boland, city clerk, and it's my pleasure to report the results of the Consolidated Municipal School and Special District Election held on November 6, 2007. The total number of votes, just real quickly, cast in the, in the election in San Carlos was 5,274 with, and we do have 18,000 registered, so that's about 29 percent, 29.2 percent voting. With 28 precincts reporting, the results are as follows for office of two council members, one city treasurer and one city clerk. Randy Royce had a total of 3,300 votes. Omar Ahmad had a total of 2,220 votes. Michael J. Galvin, 4,223. And Christine D. Boland, myself, 4,260. I recommend that you accept the certificate of the Chief Elections Officer and Assessor, County Clerk and Recorder, Warren Slocum, and adopt the resolution declaring the statement of votes cast in the Consolidated Municipal School and Special District Election held November 6, 2007. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Any questions on the report?
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that we adopt Resolution Number 2007 dash...
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one. A resolution of the city council certifying the elections.
Thank you. Second? We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Teagle Doarty?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Davids?
Yes. Okay, next on the item on the agenda are presentations. And Brad, would you like to speak to this issue?
Uh, sure. To begin with, I think we'd like to...
Do we need to do, I'm sorry, 4B?
We just did 4B, is that right, Christine?
Yeah, we did 4B.
We combined 4A and 4B.
You actually boom 4B.
So we're officially on item 5A. And before, we have a couple of presentations down at the podium for Mayor Davids and council member Inga Teagle Doarty. If you guys would like to make some comments, now would be the time.
Inga?
All right, I'll go first. I, uh, I just wanted to start off by thanking a couple of people, well, lots of people actually, for the last six years here on city council. First of all, I'd like to thank staff and all that you have done over these years. You've done a wonderful job in providing a tremendous amount of support to myself and I know my fellow council members as well, as well as very thorough and informative staff reports and just lots of encouragement, especially during the year I was mayor. So I wanted to take a moment and thank you for that. Also, I wanted to thank my fellow council members. I think it's been an enjoyable last four to six years with each and every one of you. And I'm really gonna miss actually being up here on council. I know you guys will continue to go on and do great things in the interest of San Carlos and anything I can do to help, I certainly would like to offer that up. I'd also like to thank actually the citizens of San Carlos for electing me twice in the last six years. It's really been an honor to serve the city where you are born and raised. So, excuse me, I'm tearing here. And last, I'd like to thank my kids and for all the Monday nights I've missed. So, thank you very much. Um, this is really bad. I don't usually get teary. Um, I just had a couple of thoughts as I was kind of getting ready for tonight's meeting about all the things we've been able to accomplish in the last six years. And it's really been kind of a privilege to be part of all of that. And I know that I'm stepping down and leaving the, um, passing the torch and leaving the council in good hands with Omar and Randy. And I just wanna say good luck to you and I know you'll do a great job. So, thank you.
All right. Um, it's been a long time. It's, uh, it's been a great time. Um, you know, the prophet in Ecclesiastes in the Old Testament wrote that there's a time for everything and a season for everything under heaven. A time to be born and a time to die, a time to plant and a time to uproot, a time to run for elected office and a time to refrain from running for... No, I added all that. But I think you get the point. There is a time and, um, and I've had my time. It's been a wonderful opportunity. I've seen a lot of changes in the city since I got involved in 1991, which was 16 years ago. I served during that 16 years, for 12 years, and served as mayor three times. And so I've seen a lot. I've had a great opportunity to be involved in a lot of activity in the city. And what I'm finding and what I see is that the city is changing. It always changes, I suppose, but I think when you look at the last 16 years, it's changed tremendously. Now, we're a younger city. I think we're more progressive. I think we're more involved. Uh, I think there is a more of a spirit of volunteerism and spirit of wanting to work together for the betterment of the city. And I think all of that is to the good. And what that's done is to pull us together as a community. It's truly made us, I think, the city of good living and a city that people strive to, to live in. I've talked to people who come back, even though they, they've been in a sense in a better place, you might think, but San Carlos gives them an opportunity for involvement and for, um, and for a social activity and those things that make life really worthwhile. Um, it's been a, a great year for, a great term to get things done. And I won't worry about everything that we've done the last 16 years. That, that could go on for a while. But I would like to just mention that in that short period of time, we, we built three great separations. We built an off-ramp from Highway 101 on the southbound. We did, we, uh, did a redo on Industrial Road and another one on Laurel Street. We built a library. We built miles and miles of new sewers. Uh, we built miles and miles of resurfaced roads. Uh, we designed a plan and began to talk about training issues around San Carlos and looking forward to doing something to complete that process in due time. Uh, we did the little things. We did bike lanes. You might not think that bike lanes is too big of a deal in the, in the, um, in the total picture, but to actually get along on a road that says bike lane is, uh, is more than you might think. And now we have three great, or several great, uh, opportunities for bikers to get through town. We even approved a cross, uh, a stoplight at a crosswalk. And if there's anything more difficult than bike lanes, it's a stoplight at a crosswalk. But that was also a part of our, our activity here in the last few weeks. A couple of things we didn't do. Um, and, um, you know, you reflect on what happened and you're, you're, you feel good about those things that went your way. A couple of things didn't go my way. Uh, I felt the city was support scoot and the city opted not to. And I respect that. I, I, as an elected official, sometimes wonder what I could have done better to, to make a better sell of that program, but it wasn't to be. I do think that the, the scoot opportunity was something that will be with us for a long time because traffic will be with us forever. And unless we figure out some way to, to get people around in some mode of public transportation, we'll just see more and more cars on the road. We talked about the families changing. We talked about younger families. Uh, we can almost guarantee now there's a car for every person in the family. And those cars are all moving around town, tending to do so at the same time, it seems, and congestion is gonna be a part of our life. So perhaps, uh, we can charge our, our future council to consider that again and maybe there's an opportunity to do something, uh, um, through the community where we can achieve a better form of circulation. Um, I was also disappointed on the Fields situation. Uh, I chaired that along with Brad. Uh, we worked hard for consensus. Um, we didn't get it. And, uh, and I think, I think the committee did very good work. Uh, I think perhaps the timing wasn't quite right. And, uh, and the Fields problem is still with us. And so we will continue to work on that. And hopefully the, the new council can, with new energy and perhaps new ideas, can bring that forward and, uh, and get it resolved this year. I certainly hope so. Uh, but it is an example of how committees come and committees do great work. And, uh, and it's time to move on and, um, and continue to do the job of the city. And we really appreciate all the great work that the committees do. The, um, the private side is a little more interesting, perhaps, to the public. They, they don't really realize the streets and the sewers and all the infrastructure that goes on. But we have accomplished some very interesting projects in the last 16 years. Uh, the Pacific Ostend project across the street came after a long, uh, a long debate and a long discussion about historical preference and preservation and so forth. And I think what we got was a very good project. I think people enjoy it. They, it's nice to look at. They seem to enjoy living there. And we were able to preserve four structures of historical significance in the process. Uh, we have other projects going on. As you no doubt know, the Salvatorius project is under construction. And, uh, in due time, there will be a, um, a large condominium, uh, structure there. Uh, we've had many remodel, many remodels around town. It's just amazing how in the last years, I think they've probably accelerated, more people moving in, they're buying older homes, uh, they're bringing in the kids, they need more bedrooms and on it goes. You can hardly go a block through town without seeing yet another remodel. Uh, I think what that does is, is really live in the city. I think it, uh, it brings new blood into the city and these people are interested in being involved. And I think that's, that's wonderful. So, uh, we're gonna see more as, as the, uh, the aged group tends to move on or move down and younger folks move in and, and take their place. And then the, the San Carlos Medical Center that was recently approved. Uh, this was the biggest project that I was involved in, I think, the city's ever been involved in. And I think it's a great opportunity as we, we look forward to anticipating what that can be and how that will impact and affect the, uh, the lives of all of us and the health of some of us. And, uh, it'd be nice to have that as an addition to our city. Some of the things you don't see, and I'll just comment briefly, is the things that happen internally. And Mark Weiss came to the, uh, the city a couple of years ago. Uh, he brought some ideas that have served us very well. We have a staff reorganization. Uh, we have a strategic planning session, that means twice a year. Uh, we have economic development, uh, plan that's, uh, been approved and is being launched as we speak. And we're working on some very significant, uh, issues that will lead us forward. The Parks Master Plan that Barry is working on directly. A wonderful opportunity for the city to come together and realize what we need and also what we want in terms of our future recreation. And hopefully come together in a way that we can get something substantial finished in, in due time. Um, the part, the general plan, another big issue that's going on. Um, I think when I joined the council in the early 90s, we were working on a plan that was then perhaps five years old, maybe a little bit more. Uh, now the general plan is, uh, is nearly 20 years old and/or more. And, uh, we're looking forward to having a whole new document that basically talks about what the city is going to be in the future, what you can do here and what you can't do there. And, and giving preferences for how not only the staff and not only the council, but everyone in the city has a chance to participate and all be a part of this, uh, this process. We, uh, we saved, uh, and just to give it a word, the fire department. I was, I was pleased with that. I think, uh, it was a good thing to do and I'm, I'm glad that they're, they're intact and they're still serving us well. And, uh, it was a, um, a bit of a, um, well, it was a bit of a problem from time to time to come to consensus, but, uh, we did it. And I think we're, uh, we're much better for it. Uh, we approved a trails plan, um, something near and dear to my heart, but something I think we'll all become more familiar with as we, uh, as we go forward and as a plan proceeds. Um, interesting that when my first, uh, my first, uh, term on, uh, council, when we started TV. And, um, that's been probably about 10 years ago, a little bit more, maybe 12 years ago now. Um, we sort of forgot all the cameras. We're in the process now of installing new cameras. So the pictures will be better and, uh, and the ability to project out to the audience will be better. I think it's a great improvement, but it happened not all that long ago. And it happened in consist, conjunction or, or close to the, the website. Uh, Brian Moore pulled on the, uh, the strings of the technology community and we had one of the first websites, uh, in the state, perhaps even in the country. And, uh, I think our website has done very well. It's, it's won awards for technology and, uh, as we speak, this program's being broadcasted on the web. So if you don't have Channel 27, you can always go to the internet and pick it up there. Um, we did RedConnect. Uh, you can sign on through various classes, through, uh, the, uh, the good efforts of Brian again on technology. Uh, it, uh, we have, I think, become in, over this period, a, a city recognized for its technology advances. And I think in many cases, we've taken the lead and we, we compliment staff for the good work down there. And as far as just speaking more personally, the things that you kind of enjoy doing and you're on the council. Um, we've got a lot of mixers, you know, we meet a lot of people. Thanks to the chamber for putting on mixers and ribbon cuttings that we can turn out for. And, um, and show our face and listen to the public as to what they have in mind, whether they like what we're doing or not. Um, but that's all part of the process and we want to encourage people to keep coming and keep presenting and, uh, and keep pushing if that's the case. Um, the, uh, the Eagle Scout Awards that we've given out over the last year, we've had a lot of them. Uh, and over my term on the council, we've done a good number of them. It's always a pleasure to see these young men come forward and, and if possible, go out to their events, which they put on a different venue and, and, uh, see that presentation as well. Uh, there's a, there's a blue and gold Cub Scout Dinner that comes up every year. And you may not think this is too cool, except for Cub Scouts, but I'll tell you, Cub Scouts are our future. Um, Cub Scouts are the next, next Eagle Scouts and next city council members and beyond. And it's always great to see what they're doing and see the leaders as they're developing them and as they move from one stage in scouting to another. And then just the general things that, that you do. You, you go to classes and you talk to the kids. Uh, you, uh, I had a chance this year of being mayor, of being, uh, of having, uh, some young fellows join me in, as being mayor for a day type thing. Yeah, we, we stretched it and got through noon and then we figured that was perhaps all that these kids and myself could handle. But, uh, going through the process and taking them and introducing them and watching their eyes and, uh, unfortunately, we had a great opportunity to do a tour of the firehouse. And a fire engine was fortunately in place and that took about an hour and a half, which is just about, um, brought us to lunchtime. Uh, but it was a lot of fun and those things are a part of what we do. Uh, outside, we also do things. It was my pleasure to serve, uh, for 10 years total on the South Bayside System Authority, which is our sewage treatment plant. Um, until you know what's going on in the SBSA, you really don't know too much about what happens when you flush or when you pull the plunger. Uh, it's, it's an amazing process and, uh, I will miss that. Um, I, I really enjoyed that. I've also enjoyed the, uh, the Peninsula Congestion Relief Alliance. Uh, we try to do good work in terms of, uh, of encouraging shuttles and encouraging, uh, various things to, uh, to reduce the, the flow of traffic. Um, and so there's, there's, there's all those things, uh, but I won't blabber those. I do want to mention and thank the staff for the great support they've been to me over the years. Uh, Mike Garvey was here, you know, for 10 years and I served with him. Uh, a wonderful entrepreneur, a great city manager, a good friend. Um, he retired and Mark Weiss came, uh, another great city manager and came, I think, at just the right time with just the right skills that the city needed in terms of budget planning, economic development and so forth. Uh, Jeff Mulby, uh, one of his key aides, uh, did a great work for us. Uh, Barry, of course, uh, we all know what Barry does in parking wreck. Uh, Al, uh, Survey came out of recently as a planner and before him, Liz. Uh, we had great relationships with all of them. I want to recognize Brian. I think Brian's been here longer than I have. Uh, and, uh, he's the, uh, the fellow who plugs in. Uh, if we're out of a, if we need a, a replacement manager, uh, or if we're interested in technology or if we have some lobbying to do, Brian's our go-to guy. And, uh, he's done a great job for the city and, um, I'm glad to see that he's still here. Uh, I would have thought a city may have grabbed him by now, but, um, we won't push on that because I think Brian does a good job here. And then of course Parvies. Parvies has done, well, almost a miracle cure on some things. Um, you know, without Parvies being at the fore, we probably wouldn't have our great separations. At least we'd be down, down the list somewhere with someone, uh, uh, having gone before us. But the fact that he was able to come forward and he was able to make, uh, a pitch for advanced planning because funding was on the way, uh, we were first in line and we got ours in. And I think, you know, despite all the aggravation we had and despite some of the political contention we had, I think it's been a great project. And, uh, and, uh, is, is really recognized as part of these talents. And he did so many things in all of these, uh, these other areas. Um, I also want to, uh, to talk, uh, just, you know, just briefly mention, uh, some folks who, uh, who you don't see. Uh, the Michelle and the Dana and the Sean and the Will and the Mark and the Christine and the, and the Melissa. These are the reporters. Um, when I came to the council in 91, you couldn't find a reporter to talk to. There really was, was only one paper. They published once a week and, um, it wasn't a whole lot of interest for what was going on. I think the thing that makes our communication process work so well is because we have three dailies and we have a half a dozen reporters. And these reporters are always interested and looking for stories. And so you get a lot of calls. Um, but I have found over the years that they have done a very good job representing our side of the story as well as the public side, if it's different or together. Uh, I, I...
...
Excuse me. And I think that, uh, I think they do a good job. And I think that, uh, as my colleagues come on board, Randy and Omar, and, and I know my, my fellow council members who continue, we'll get these calls as we all have and they'll respond and we'll continue to get good coverage. And, and finally, I'd like to, uh, thank my family. I have some family here. My wife, Carolyn, is here. She's been a real support to me over these years. And she hasn't always supported me, but she's been a support to me. There's a little difference there. Um, but it's been, uh, it's been great. You know, we have these long walks and we talk about city things and, um, I try to encourage yours, pay attention and listen because these are all very important. And, uh, we work on this. Uh, but it's been wonderful. Uh, we've been married for 49 years. She's my best friend and, uh, we go through life together. So it's been great having her here. My daughter is also here. My daughter Susan, uh, sitting next to her. I'm gonna Susan, raise your hand. That's it. Thank you. Susan is, uh, is, uh, my daughter. She's also representing her three brothers, uh, Brad and Tim and Scott. We couldn't be here. They shouldn't have. They really wanted to be, but, uh, other things came up and they couldn't make the trip. So we'll excuse them for that. Uh, Bob's, uh, I'm sorry, Susan's husband, Bob, is here. Bob? He's back here. Uh, he is, um, representing the in-laws of the family. We got, we got Jenny and, and we have Annie and, uh, and we have, um, uh, Leslie, girlfriend Leslie. Uh, they all wanted to be here as well, uh, but somehow they didn't make it either. And then I have, uh, I have three grandsons. I have Sam and I have Ben and I have Joe. And they're sitting back there. Now, you're all gonna see them later on when we get to the reception because they promised to come and help serve. And so, um, they will take good care of you. They represent, by the way, the, the cousin element. They represent Thomas and Eric and, and, um, I'm forgetting, Sarah and Scott. And they represent John and, uh, and Peter and Bobby. That's it. So they're all represented either directly or indirectly. And I want to thank them for coming and being a part of this program. Uh, just wanted to comment. People say, "What are you gonna do?" You know, "It's been a long time. We've been serving and, and that's great." And I, and I really have, uh, as I say, I've enjoyed it. And, uh, I don't know, uh, I'll have more free time, obviously. I might build a couple more boats. I gotta figure out what to do with the boats I have, but, uh, I do enjoy building boats. I'll have more hiking time. I've been putting a little weight lately. I think, uh, more time on the trail is probably what I need. Uh, I need to do more work time. Uh, I, I, I'm still working part-time and I need to spend more time at work. So the combination of all those things, I'm sure I'm gonna have plenty to do. I also got Channel 27 and I only live a few blocks away so I can come down and, and, um, talk to my fellow council members if I'm inclined. I've noticed that doesn't happen a whole lot with council members moving off. You know, they sort of move off and they, they stay away a while and we'll probably do the same. And so I think that's probably all I need to say. Probably said too much already, but I did want to give that perspective. And I, and again, I want to thank all of you for coming, all of the public for, uh, for being a part of, of my career in politics. And I do want to invite everyone here to come over to the adult center after this and, uh, enjoy some refreshments. Have a reception over there. We have plenty of food and drink and we'd like to have you share. Uh, make sure that you take Carolyn's peanut butter cookies, homemade. She loves them and I love them. If you don't eat them, I'll eat them and so you ought to all have some. And then there's Jonghavels. Jonghavels are something you may not have seen before. I think it's, Dutch means, means good cookie or something. I, I don't know what it means, but it's, they're very good. So if you're, if you're over there, make sure you grab a couple of those. Um, and with that, uh, I think I've said enough. Thank you.
And before we ask both of you to come down to the podium, why don't we quickly, uh, we'll have some comments from other council members, uh, before we move down to the podium. Councilmember Grocott?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to thank Inga for her time on the council, serving together. I think we both got elected at the same time, although for different kinds of seats. Inga was, uh, elected to a two-year seat, I believe.
I did want to give that perspective. And I, and again, I want to thank all of you for coming, all of the public for, for being a part of, of my career in politics. And I do want to invite everyone here to come over to the adult center after this and enjoy some refreshments. Have a reception over there. We have plenty of food and drink and we'd like to have you share. Make sure that you take Verlin's peanut butter cookies, homemade. She loves them and I love them. If you don't eat them, I'll eat them and so you ought to all have some. And then there's Jonghavels. Jonghavels are something you may not have seen before. I think it's Dutch means, means good cookie or something. I don't know what it means, but it's, they're very good. So if you're over there, make sure you grab a couple of those. And with that, I think I've said enough. Thank you.
And before we ask both of you to come down to the podium, why don't we quickly, we'll have some comments from other council members before we move down to the podium. Councilmember Grokot.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Inga for her time on the council, serving together. I think we both got elected at the same time, although for different kinds of seats. Inga was elected to a two-year seat, I believe. But we came onboard both at the same time. And I do have to say, I can't believe how much your kids have grown. I remember riding the little train that we get on for the, what was it, hometown days and seeing these three little guys, you know, get on the train with us and they walk in here tonight and you tell me one of them's driving a car. Can't believe that. So thank you for the time of service on council together. It's been enjoyable. Thank you. And Tom, I thank you also for, for the time together that we've had. There's been many times I've gone to you for advice and counseling, if you will, on, on city, on how to be a city council member and how to do it right and so forth. Those times sitting at different coffee shops around town, I appreciate the extra time that you've given. And I also appreciate your taking on the cause of Pastor Christiane with me and joining me in that effort going down. It was great to be on the trip and have Verlin along and boy, the stuff that she can write, she should be writing books. It was, it was very good and I appreciate the both of you going on the trip. And if you want to sell a boat, give me a call. I might be interested. I've seen those boats. They're pretty, look pretty nice. And don't, I, I, I know you're just gonna be over there, you know, close to, close to downtown here where you live and I might be dropping, excuse me, dropping by once in a while because now I guess I'm gonna be the old guy on the council. So there may be times I still need to come along for some advice and, and ask you to meet me for coffee. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Grisell.
Thank you Vice Mayor Lewis. I'll start with the mayor. You don't know until you sit up here how nice it is to have a, should we say, an old Tom, not because of his age, but just the way he handles himself, is the kind of person you'd like to have on any group that you're involved in. He's a very calming influence, especially when you have an Italian like me sitting next to him. When he speaks, you listen because he doesn't just talk to hear himself. Over the last two years that I've sat here and of course I paid attention even before that, I just always felt that he was the one that sort of had the pulse and a calming influence on the pulse of, of all of us. Despite what, what councilmember Grokot said, by, by Mayor David's leaving, I will be the oldest. Not in length of service, but the oldest, which is really scary because I'm not as calm as I mentioned as, as Mayor David's. So don't look to me to, to calm this group down. Maybe you guys down there, Omar and Gary, uh, Gary, Randy can, can help us out. But anyway, I appreciate Tom, all the work that you've done over the years and so many things in a quiet, professional, behind-the-scenes way. Not ever standing up and starting a sentence with "I" and we're gonna miss you, we really Councilmember Doherty. We served on the Planning Commission together in the mid to late 90s and then she got elected to a higher office. As she mentioned, when I was installed two years ago, we spent many long nights together. On the dice up here. And I, I count her as, as a friend and as a, as a person that, as, as Matt was indicating with Tom, with, with bouncing ideas off. Same thing with, with Inga and also on a personal basis also. And she has done an awful lot for this city over the years. How exciting it must be and as she mentioned in her comments, to be born into a city and then be allowed to be elected to city council, become the mayor of it. I can't imagine how, what that would feel like. That would just, just be the tops. Inga, I thank you for, for everything you've done for the city of San Carlos and I thank you for everything that we've had together personally and just done a great job. Thank you.
And from my standpoint, Mayor David, if I understood your speech correctly, you've been on the council since the invention of TV and that's, that's a lot longer than I had thought. And, and Bob, you will be the oldest guy in council, by the way. You're right about that. Thanks for taking that part of my speech. Let me just write, cross that out. You know, one of the things about city councils that I'm not sure everybody considers is there's a chemistry that takes place with five different people. And, you know, this council's had a real, a real good chemistry. I think we all have different strengths. We have no weaknesses, by the way. And it's, you know, on any given subject, you have conversation with a different council person about that subject, get their point of view on something. Never with a Brown Act violation, senior attorney. Yep. But I'm really gonna miss from Mayor David's and Councilmember Tegel Doherty, actually, my favorite thing is we all have somebody with such a long hyphenated last name on council anymore. Yeah, there we go. But the collective experience of these two folks is a dramatic strength for the council. And that's not to make everybody nervous about the future because we have two new people come on, coming on the council with dramatic strengths as well. But we will, we will really miss the ability to bounce things off of both of you and get your unique perspective. Tom, I always feel like you bring an overview and perspective to things that helps take the chemistry of this council and kind of blend it together and give us perspective coming into an issue and leaving an issue. And we'll miss that and respect that and thank you very much for that. And Inga, you are fearless and I respect that about you. Whether your opinion's majority or minority, you go after it and you express it well. And I hope we all have that sense of fearlessness and ability to look at issues and speak our minds like you do. And I appreciate everything you've done for me and for the council for the last several years. Thank you very much.
And since I'm still mayor for a minute and a half, I did forget a couple of things in my recitation.
And I know these.
No, I know you, I know you all bear me to just a couple more minutes, but I did forget to, to recognize the, the Planning Commission, the Arts and Culture Commission, the Traffic Circulation Commission, the Park and Rec Commission, all those people who, who spend many, many hours working for the good of the city. Our new San Carlos Green, our Building Community Task Force, now known as San Carlos Together. Wonderful people doing great things for the city. One of the great things that's happened over the years is you get more and more people who want these jobs. They don't pay anything and they, they involve a lot of time, but people want to serve and I think that speaks well for the city. I, I also neglected to compliment and to congratulate our two new council members, Randy Royce and Omar Ahmad. Ran a great campaign. Congratulations on your win. I look forward to, to seeing you in action. I'm sorry I won't be a part of the, of the process. I think it's gonna be a lot of fun with you two up here. And also compliment John Hoffman and Alex Phillips for, for working the campaign and making this a very interesting time of our, of our political life. And so we move on and we, we get things done. And again, congratulations and thanks to all. Thank you.
We can just about officially proclaim that you've left nobody out. Thank you, Tom. All right, I'd like to ask both of you to come down to the podium for some presentations. I, I think I saw Assemblyman Ruskin in the audience. Please come on up. Would you like to give your presentation to the, I'd like to introduce Assemblyman Ira Ruskin.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here this evening. Hello to all the folks in the audience. It's hard to face and maybe what I'll, no, I need to use the mic, don't I?
We have a pedaling box.
Me doing this first and then end with the mayor. Well, it's a real pleasure, you know, it's a pleasure, of course, to represent San Carlos and an honor to represent San Carlos in the State Assembly. And it's also a pleasure to, to be able to honor both of you. I've known both of you for many years and I have great respect for you both. Having served on the Redwood City Council for nine years and the pleasure of being mayor there, I know the sacrifice you both made over many years, doing it for the sake of the community. You've both done an excellent job. We owe a great deal to you for your sacrifice and we owe a great deal to your families as well because they share the sacrifice. And it's my pleasure on behalf of the, the California State Legislature, this, which I'm presenting to you on behalf of Senator Joe Semidion, who could not be here this evening, but sends his regrets and his congratulations and his thanks as well for your service. First to Inga Tegel Doherty and, you know, that is some name, you know? The first time I ever heard it, I said, "What is a Tegel Doherty?" And no, it's, but I won't read the entire proclamation, but let me begin, finish by saying, "Resolve that the Honorable Inga Tegel Doherty be commended on her distinguished record of leadership as a member of the San Carlos City Council, applauded on her exemplary display of public achievements and extended sincere best wishes for continued success in the future." On behalf of Senator Joe Semidion and myself, it's an honor to recognize your contribution and your achievements tonight. Tommy, you've really done a yeoman's job for so many years. I've always respected your impeccable integrity and the, the passion of your service. The city is really immeasurably richer for all that you have given to it. And once again, Senator Semidion extends his congratulations to you and his regrets that he was unable to be here tonight. I'm pleased to present this resolution to you, "Resolve that the Honorable Tom, Thomas J. David be commended on his distinguished record of leadership as mayor of the city of San Carlos, applauded on your exemplary display of public achievements and extended sincere best wishes for continued success in the future." The city, we owe you a lot, Tom, for your, so many years of great service. Thank you.
And then for each of you, we also have a certificate of congressional recognition from Congressman Lantus's office. Inga? Here's yours. Congratulations. Tom? We also have resolutions, boy, if you ever leave council, make sure you clear a wall in your room. The, we also have a resolution from the Board of Supervisors. And I'm not gonna read this because I didn't bring my glasses down here. And gee, thank you. My daughter Ella, thank you Ella. Anyway, Inga from the Board of Supervisors? Congratulations. Tom? Congratulations. Once again. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and struggle through without the glasses here. I think I can make it happen. So Inga, this is from the city and this is again, a proclamation expressing appreciation to, to Inga Tegel Doherty upon her retirement from the San Carlos City Council. And a couple of paragraphs in here, "Where her service to San Carlos constitutes a high point in the distinguished career, which included representative, representation on the Planning Commission, Economic Development Advisory Commission, the Housing and Endowment Regional Trust, Advanced Life Support Joint Powers Authority Board and the Harbor Industrial Association." And where as Inga Tegel Doherty initiated the enhancing the city of good living initiation, whereby forming several citizen task forces resulting in the San Carlos Green, a nonprofit making the city an even better place to live. And where she's performed a balancing act between her family, her employer and the city of San Carlos, while at times providing her utmost commitment and dedication to each, thereby engendering widespread respect from her colleagues and high regard among elected officials in the city. Inga? Do you think that's gonna make me read any faster? You got another thing coming. Oh, hey. This is to Tom David's. Where Tom has played a major role in the city's economic development and housing programs over the years through his membership on the Economic Development Advisory Commission, chairmanship of the Housing Subcommittee and his work with the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce for many years, as well as his work on the city's below-market rate housing ordinance, the San Carlos Elm Senior Housing Development and San Mateo County's recent regional housing needs assessment, the first regional housing needs assessment process in California. And where service to San Carlos has included representation in several key areas, including the South Bayside System Authority, the Sister City Association, the Congestion Management and Air Quality Committee and Governing Board of the County Library Joint Powers Authority, to name just a few. Tom has continually advocated for San Carlos citizens, encouraged them to participate in projects and programs resulting in the formation of a number of programs at the Chamber of Commerce, the city and the community, which led him to receive the chamber's Citizen of the Year Award and the formation of community-based groups that are focused on areas including green programs, trails, creeks and citizen participation. Tom? And then we have the coveted golden pens from the city of good living as very expensive going-away gifts. Yes. At least they don't have to go on your wall. Thank you. And then Inga carry these home.
I brought my helpers.
Tom, I'm not sure if these should go to you or Verlin, but I'll start with you. And then we actually have seats in the front row reserved for you at this point, ladies and gentlemen, Councilmember Tegel Doherty and Mayor David. We'd like to now move on to item 5C and the city clerk to administer the oath of office to newly-elected city council members. Christine?
Mr. Ahmad, Mr. Royce, could you please come up? And please raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the, of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
Thank you. I've got your official election certificate from the county of San Mateo. And if you can sign your oath. Thank you and welcome. Congratulations. Congratulations.
You don't get any bottles of water, though, until later. And we will now move on to Item 5D, city clerk to administer the oath of office to the city treasurer.
Here we are again. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you're about to enter?
I will.
Thank you. Here's your election certificate, and if you can sign your oath of office.
And now, if we could have the city attorney please administer the oath of office to our city clerk.
(INAUDIBLE).
She's got to bring the family in.
make any comments or statements that they might like.
They've been waiting in the wings.
Councilmember Omar Ahmad.
I like the sound of it.
We thought these seats were in front for them.
Thank you. Assemblyman Ruskin, honorable members of the San Carlos City Council, honored guests,
Is everybody ready?
San Carlos city staff, San Carlos neighbors and my friends.
Well, I'd just like to say that our city clerk is the wind beneath all of our wings.
Wow, I don't know whether to drop out of a cold faint or just jump up and down and
She is absolutely the best city clerk I've ever worked with. She's, she makes all this seem easy.
dance.
She does a great job and it was absolutely wonderful you re-elected.
I'm so, but thank you. I tried to think of what was important to bring out tonight, and I wanted to say, "We
So if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me, "Do you solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the
are what we, what we do, not what we say."
Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without
And I wanted to quote the famous 20th-century philosopher Yoda.
any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge
Try not do or do not, there is no try.
the duties upon which you're about to enter?"
I will.
Oh, thank you. Thomas, you too?
As much as we want to try, what you've really elected us to do is to do.
And if I hand you the certification of your election?
Thank you very much.
So, the first thing I want to do is to thank some folks.
And if you will sign the oath of office?
I want to thank Alex Phillips and John Hoffman for running campaigns of integrity and for giving the people of San Carlos an opportunity to see different sides, different issues, and different things to think about. I commend you and I applaud your, your run. Thank you. I want to thank Councilman Randy Royce. I've enjoyed serving with him on EDAC and I look forward to a lot of fun on city council. And thank you for, for your raise. There are so many people who come together during a campaign, and I've thanked folks a number of times, but I want to thank two people in particular, Asma Zia and Noman Ahmed. They've been friends and I dare say that they've become close family at this point and couldn't come out without them, and I just want to say, "Thank you and I love you guys very, very much." Finally, I want to extend my thanks to Inga and to Tom. You have left colossal shoes to fill and no one will be able to follow your act. We will simply succeed and sit in your chairs. Thank you for your service and thank you for all your hard work to San Carlos. People have asked me, they said, "Hey Omar, what's the first thing you're going to do on city council?" So, again, I've said, "It's what we do, not what we say." So, thought about this. These are water bottles. And, yeah, it's a water bottle. Somebody else drank out of it, Inga. And, but the fact is, San Carlos has, we treat our own water. And I think it's appropriate for council members to say, "You know what? We're going to drink what we do, and if we're not willing to drink our own water, then we've got some other work to do." I just got back from the UK where I gave a speech at the Royal Society and had this wonderful glass bottle, so I'd like to work with city staff to see if we can start to put our own water up here and be proud of what we're putting out in San Carlos. We are going to lead by example and, as Margaret Mead stated much more eloquently than I will, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world because nothing else ever has." I've talked about my family a great deal during this campaign, and I announced my candidacy on the anniversary of my parents becoming citizens. My folks became, came to the United States on a Pan Am jet and they landed at JFK. And if you've gone through the International Arrivals Terminal, you're faced with the inscription that you find on the base of the Statue of Liberty. Bring me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse from your teeming shore. Send these the homeless tempest toss to me. I lift my lamp beside the golden door. I really come to believe in San Carlos, that lectern is the golden door. It is hallowed ground. It is where democracy works. I've been so proud every city council meeting when the mayor says, "Who is here for public comment?" That is the first thing up front, and that's where democracy works. My parents came here to study. I want to be clear what they did, because I said, "It's what we do." They left their homeland. They left their family. They left security. They left the language that they grew up with, and they were in search of something greater. They wanted opportunity. They wanted a meritocracy. They wanted democracy. So what did they do? They took an oath to serve. They made a promise to vote. When I turned 18, they dragged me over to the county supervisor's office. I registered to vote. They served on community boards. They were active on various social groups. They helped build a playground. And they taught me very clearly, "This is your home. This is your duty, and that's what you're supposed to do." To be clear, what my parents did, they raised three kids. My two sisters became attorneys. This one actually hopes that after being elected, they might forgive him for not being a doctor. It might happen. I've been told on council they won't, but there we go. But this story's about a journey. It's, as my parents took their journey to this new shore, my journey took me to Washington, DC, and then here to California. My journey has been that of an entrepreneur, and tonight, my journey has brought me into your service on the San Carlos City Council. Councilmember Royce, Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Griselli, Councilmember Grokot, members of the city staff, we will face many challenges together. The good people of San Carlos have asked us to serve and address many points. Some of these points are hard. They require tough decisions and new thinking. Einstein said it best, "We can't solve the problems by using the same kind of thinking we used when we created them." Over the next few hundred decisions that we'll make, my dad reminded me that, "You guys might actually disagree with me." Go figure. But I'm going to try to hold true to what Walt Whitman said. "Have you learned the lessons only of those who admired you and who were tender with you and stood aside for you? Have you not learned great lessons from those who braced themselves against you and disputed passage with you? I look forward to learning many lessons from you." Our city has asked us to provide leadership on our journey to the future. It is my honor to serve with you, and as we move forward together, I look forward to a working relationship of common purpose and respect. And finally, to my San Carlos neighbors, we are what we do. Our journey is now together, each member of our community playing a role that is important and active. I'm an entrepreneur. I look at problems and I start thinking of core values, how to make things work well. In one of my companies, we actually had an imprint on the paycheck, and it said, "This paycheck is signed courtesy of our customers." One core value I bring to this post is the clear notion that I'm here to serve the good people of San Carlos. Some of my San Carlos neighbors, I need your help. I need your prayers. As a son of immigrants, I'm reminded of the courage and commitment it takes to move forward, to be able at any moment to sacrifice what we are for what we can become. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor. Running for council was an experience of a lifetime, and why I mention it now is I want a few of you to be thinking about two or four years from now, especially a couple women, who will start planning now for the challenge of city council. I also have many people to thank. We had a great campaign team, and in that team, I'll start off with my wife that I love so much, because she is the walker, the talker, and the one that got me votes. Mike ate a lot, the chairperson, just kept us very focused. And I'll also highlight my son, Roger, in the front row. So many people came up to me and said, "They voted for me because of my signs, or my brochures, or my website." Well, none of that was me. That was all Roger that designed all three of those products. So, thank you very much, and to the rest of the team. We have a lot of thanks to give to, to our city staff, all the work that you've done for all those years. I've done an incredible job to pass city councils. I'd also like to use a quote, because I could talk about Tom Davids for a half hour, but Harry Truman said it in one sentence, and I hope you agree with me. "It's amazing what you can accomplish if you do not care who gets the credit." Tom, you did an incredible job for our city. Thank you. (APPLAUSE). I also appreciate the help. I have a brother, Gary, my parents right behind Roger here, all the endorsers that helped me through the campaign, and of course, it all gets down to the voters, because you have all spoken. I have a few things that I listed, but I'm not going to say them this evening. I think I'll reserve them for a future meeting, but it's things I've learned knocking on doors. But I will share one story, since Omar brought his water bottle out. I have one story and one example of maybe something that we could do. And it came from our history books, San Carlos Short Stories, I mean, San Carlos Stories, all right? And in the last couple nights, I was thumbing through it, and I got into the chapter back in 1925 during the incorporation of our city, first council. And what they did, their first order of business was to go down on the highway, El Camino, and put a sign up on the south end and on the north end. And guess what that sign said? You could guess the first half, but not the second. The first part said, "San Carlos." The second part said, "Twenty miles per hour." I'm going to go looking for those two signs, and maybe that will be something that we, as a council, will do. No promises. I am truly, this evening, honored to serve all of you here, all of you at home on the web, or on Comcast. Thank you for your support. We will hope to fulfill several of our city's needs and our dreams. And I guess I would like to end by saying, with the holiday season coming up, we can think of all the places in the world that you could be. But here we are here, and I think I would like you to think about our freedom, our health, and our love of family that makes life so special. So, thank you very much for your support. Thank you.
Well, and congratulations to both of you guys. And now, Item 5G, I'd like to call for nominations for mayor.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to nominate you for the next mayor of San Carlos, Brad Lewis.
Second?
Christine, we have a...
I'd also like to close the nominations.
Don't I have to do that to the Robert's rules? Right?
Yes, sir.
Nice work, Bob.
I'll go along with his amendment to his, on my second.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Oh, sure.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
And with that, I'd like to call for nominations for vice mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Councilmember Griselli to serve as vice man for this coming year.
And do we have second?
I have second that.
Roll call, please, Christine.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
I know everybody has been sitting for a long time. It's a bit warm, at least it's warm up here.
Did we change the order of agenda at all?
Did we?
Could we now? Could we change it now?
We, we, no.
Oh, okay.
But it was an excellent question. So, I, thank you, Bob. So, I will try to keep it short, but you know, we, we, now that we've had a lot of reflection upon Tom and Inga's departure and the, and the arrival of Omar and Randy, we've got a lot of work to do in the next 12 months. And it'll be my pleasure to work together with everybody to, to keep a lot of momentum going in a lot of different directions here. And I'd also like to pause and thank friends and family for, that came tonight for me personally. It's great to see you guys here, and it means a lot to me that you're here. And also, somebody throw your faces in the audience, this is really a Homer crowd. It's fantastic. There's a lot of involved people in the community. Thank you all for being here tonight. You know, one of, one of the big things that we have going in this next year that's really important is the general plan. It's, it's a visionary document. It's a guiding document for the city. As Tom mentioned in his comments, it's over 20 years old, the current, the current general plan. We've already initiated a committee that's starting to work on it. The Park and Rec is doing a master plan that's going to fold into it. But it really, it is the pillars of the, the general plan that become a living document that, that for years to come, we use for guidance when we look at how the city's going to develop and what the future of San Carlos looks like. So, I encourage everybody to participate in that process to the extent that you can and will and are able to. I think it's very, really important that we put a lot of energy into that, and I know this, this group will, and I know that the staff is already putting a lot of work into it. And I look forward to the next year being a year of trying to sort of get that vision together and create a document that we all feel is reflective of what we want San Carlos to look and feel like, you know, 20 years from now. So I will try to keep it short, but you know, we, now that we've had a lot of reflection upon Tom and Inga's departure and the arrival of Omar and Randy, we've got a lot of work to do in the next 12 months. And it'll be my pleasure to work together with everybody to keep a lot of momentum going in a lot of different directions here. And I'd also like to pause and thank friends and family that came tonight. For me personally, it's great to see you guys here, and it means a lot to me that you're here. And also, somebody throw your faces in the audience, this is really a Homer crowd, it's fantastic. There's a lot of involved people in the community. Thank you all for being here tonight. You know, one of the big things that we have going in this next year that's really important is the general plan. It's a visionary document, it's a guiding document for the city. As Tom mentioned in his comments, it's over 20 years old, the current general plan. We've already initiated a committee that's starting to work on it. The park and rec is doing a master plan that's going to fold into it. But it really, it is the pillars of the general plan that become a living document that for years to come, we use for guidance when we look at how the city's going to develop and what the future of San Carlos looks like. So I encourage everybody to participate in that process to the extent that you can and will and are able to. I think it's very, really important that we put a lot of energy into that, and I know this group will, and I know that the staff is already putting a lot of work into it. And I look forward to the next year being a year of trying to sort of get that vision together and create a document that we all feel is reflective of what we want San Carlos to look and feel like, you know, 20 years from now. Secondly, I think everybody's aware that we have a structural budget deficit in San Carlos, and which means we do a lot of talk about economic development. Their staff and the Economic Development Advisory Committee has already done a lot of great work in starting to put together foundations of how we look at that, and we have a planning document that is also a great document and product of a lot of good work here. But I think this council in the next year, we will spend a lot of time looking for different avenues of revenue in order to help us with our structural deficit. And a lot of those avenues for revenue can affect the quality of life here in San Carlos, and I think it's always for all of us a delicate balance on where we press and what we talk about and how we want to sort of do in economic development. And so I just feel that it's one of those things that we're all going to be tackling this year, and it's an important thing for us all to get after. One of the really interesting things that has manifested itself in the last year or two is, San Carlos is a very environmentally conscious city, and I think that's starting to reflect itself, not in just our, you know, our green initiatives, but in the way that we look at everything. I think we're starting to look at it much more holistically, about being good citizens and good, a city that's a good citizens in the state and on the planet. And I think that we have this collective consciousness, and I think, I'm really happy to see that we sort of consider that in so many of the different things that we do. So as we pursue economic development, I think we need to consider incentives to some of the different green companies in the building industry that are involved in sustainable companies and are good citizens to bring them to San Carlos. And I think that we should exhaust our efforts in trying to exploit a strength of ours, and our strength is this environmental consciousness that we have in the city and a great deal of support in all the different facets of it citywide. I think we can be more aggressive in our recycling demands and our recycling plans this year, and I'll look forward to us also sort of seeing how we can make progress in that area, as well as some of the different pedestrian enhancements. I think we've all, we've done a lot of different things this year in concern about traffic speed and increasing the sort of pedestrian experience in town. And I'll look forward to our strategic planning meeting so we can start to come up with what are the definitives that we can get done this year toward that. And then finally, we also have the athletic field notion in front of us. We already have momentum in one direction on athletic field, and I look forward to this council maintaining momentum toward coming up with a solution so we can increase participation. And actually, I think when I was in the parking rec commission, over six years ago, we brought a plan to council that has yet really, there's yet to be any definitive action in a way that we're really taking care of that problem yet. So I'll look forward to this council this year hopefully starting to put some of the first stakes to the ground toward helping solve that problem. And I look forward to the momentum in the athletic field, and let's work together and let's get that solved. Again, new council members, it's an absolute pleasure to get your new sort of prism perspective. I know that when we all came off the campaign trail two years ago, what you're filled with is a bunch of ideas, a lot of energy, people are telling you around town what they think and feel about things, and you're out there finding out. So we'll look forward to those perspectives you bring them into council, and we'll look forward to your new energy, and we'll get something done this year. Existing council members, I just want to thank you. You have both been a great help to me over the last couple of years. I have a good time working up here with you guys, and I look forward to this year, and thank you very much for your support tonight, all four of you. Staff, you guys are dedicated, you're talented, it's a pleasure to work with you. I don't know if everybody realizes that the City Manager Weiss, how much work he's done over the last couple of years, not just his strengths on the budget, but he's pulled together a heck of a staff here and blended really well with the existing staff. And you guys are solid and dedicated, and it's going to be a pleasure working with you this year. And finally, all of you, we have a really involved community. We have a community that's talented, great ideas, and the things that we get done, staff does all the real tough work with all of our big ideas. Council can help give those momentum and perspective and to help push them along. But we do it on the backs of the community. And so I think every one of you, for the energy and spirit that you bring to San Carlos, there's no doubt in my mind that this is the best city in the Bay Area to bring up a family, to be single, to just feel like you can connect to someplace that you can call home. And that's a rare thing in this day and age, and we have it, so let's covet it, and we'll push it on. And together, we'll have a great year, and thank you very much. And if we ever have any final comments by council members, we'll take them now. Councilmember Grokot?
Go ahead. No, none. Fine, yeah.
I want to go last if anybody has any comments, any other comments.
Councilmember, go on.
I have none.
Great.
I just have one thing. This morning in the newspaper, there was an article in the Daily Journal interviewing our mayor, Mr. Lewis, and he had a phrase in there that I hadn't heard in a while. Looking at some of the challenges and the problems that we could be facing and will be facing in this year, he said, "Let's set them up and knock them down." So on that note, I got him a bowling set.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Griselli. The promise, we need five bowling balls. Yeah, because we all do it together. By the way, I meant to also thank my wife Regina Lewis, who's in the front row here, and my darling daughter Ella, who's standing up just for the occasion. Again, I love you guys, and I wouldn't, couldn't do it without you. With that, we're going to go on to 6A. We have one item of business to attend to before we adjourn tonight, and that's the appointment of a council member of the South Bayside Waste Management Authority's Green Advisory Committee. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I'm happy to bring this to you and give you a chance to play a little bowling here. The South Bayside Waste Management Authority, also known as the SBWMA, manages the garbage and recycling franchise for San Carlos and 11 other agencies in the county. As you probably know, the recyclery and transfer station is based in San Carlos on Shoreway Road. In order to move from the current form of recycling, which is called multi-stream, to the newer form of recycling called single stream, it will be necessary to take down that plant and reconstruct it. The SBWMA has decided to set up a committee of elected officials, one from each of the agencies, to meet and discuss some of the green features of that facility. One of the things that the SBWMA is talking about is making that the first lead certified building in San Carlos. So at the staff level, we're pretty excited about that. The meeting that this will be discussed among the elected officials could take place as early as January 9th, which is before your next council meeting, and that is the reason that we brought this to you tonight. We'd like to suggest that the mayor, with concurrence of the new council, discuss amongst yourself who you would like to attend this meeting, represent San Carlos' interests on this very important topic, and then to be prepared to attend the meeting on or about January 9th. So that is the item before you tonight.
And, excuse me, Brian, just to clarify, is that currently just to attend the one meeting when it does happen at this point? Is this what this appointment is for?
That's correct. The committee is, at this point, envisioned to only meet on the one meeting. Yes.
Great. Any comments by council members?
None. I'd be happy to serve on it, but, no.
Okay. With that, Matt, if you express an interest, why don't we appoint you to attend that meeting for now, and as a backup? Be happy to back him up as an alternate. If you can't make the meeting when they do it, we'll have Councilmember Ahmad.
Okay, thank you very much.
Fair enough. Thank you very much, Brian. And with that, we're going to adjourn to reception. There's the Adult Community Center, you can walk right through over this way. Former Mayor Davis is hosting tonight, so drink you need as much as you'd like. And please come on over and have a good word to everybody. Thank you very much, everybody, for being here. We're adjourned.